All right, we'll now call to order the Buncombe County July fifteenth briefing meeting to order. As you can see, I'm not Chair Edwards, but I'm going to do my best impression. Has everyone had a chance to review the meeting agenda and does anyone have any adjustments? Or questions about it before we get rolling? Says it's on. You're good? Excellent. Well, we'll go ahead and start with staff updates, beginning with the FCC update. And I believe we have Dane Peterson here to get us started.
All right, thanks, sir. Commissioners, good afternoon. FCC Environmental, the county's contractor for collections, trash, weekly trash collection, and every other week recycle collection in unincorporated Buncombe is here today to provide us an update on how operations are going. We've got Louis Knight and John Connerton here with us, and I will turn it over to Louis for the presentation.
Hello, everyone. How y'all doing today? Thank you for having us back up here. We'll go ahead and get started. This is just the itinerary for today's meeting. Going to go over the call center update, route collection percentages, service improvements, our recycling, how much improvements we've made since we took over the contract, and then our community outreach. Through June of 2025, we were averaging twenty-two calls a day. As you can see, the chart breaks down to whether it was carts missed trash, missed recycling, or whether it was a premium backdoor stop that might have a question, or they were the ones being missed, or whatever through routing discrepancy, or whatever it happened to be, which is a drop from the previous, previous month, I think it was twenty twenty-eight. So we're moving in the right direction there. Customer service calls, as of July first, all calls are now being answered through the local site. That's one of the things in our last meeting with you guys we promised to deliver on. So then, once we done that, we added four additional onsite customer service representatives. And we still have our four dispatchers and one onsite billing agent that's already in place. This has been a big step in the right direction for us handling all the escalations and being able to deal with the calls. One of our biggest complaints was people having to call Colorado. Now they're calling somebody here in Buncombe, so they're a lot pleased with that. Route collection, this is the missed stops for the last eight weeks. We had a spike, I think it was the June eleventh week there. That was just through staffing issues. We had a couple of people on vacations, and we had to, some safety violations that we had to deal with. So when people start feeling in and helping with other routes and trying to pick up those type of things, it increased a little bit, but you can see we dropped right back the next week when everybody was back to where they were supposed to be at. So again, I'm pleased with these numbers as well. Current FCC subscribers, FCC currently serves thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-three subscribers for trash and recycling services, surpassing the previous haulers, thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-three customers. This number continues to grow each week as we continue to sign people up. Up to this day, we're still signing people up, so it's going to continue to grow, which is good for everyone. Service improvements, I'll have to get my sheet out, because it's a lot smaller for me to read. We've continued to adjust the routes, more customers sign up to ensure that we have the capacity on the truck or the routing to this correct type. So if we have a pup truck picking up, we try to monitor how many stops are picking up. If we make less trips to the transfer station or to the dump, we get to a certain number, we can add more equipment to it. Fully staffed now have swing drivers available to cover absences or assists with routes to get behind. So it's like having an extension of your management team. We have two swing drivers that aren't assigned to a route. It's when everybody's staffed up, they go out and do, pick up misses, do a route audit, observations, make sure we're being safe out there, checking to make sure all trucks on the road they should be on. Morning crew out, before, we were having missed stop guys go out, pick up the misses. So it really wasn't helping us fix the problem of repeat misses. So what we did, we crew out in the morning time now. If a driver missed a stop that had been a repeat miss, before he starts that day's route, he goes back out to the previous day to pick up. So now he's familiar where it's at, gets familiar why he might have been missing it. We communicate with them, and that's why it's driven our repeat misses way down from what they were before. When they come back in the afternoon, the evening check dispatch verifies all route completions through our third eye system, GPS tracking, and the map systems, we verify that all the routes are completed by the end of the day. Recycling tonnage comparison from January through March of 2025, it's five hundred and thirty-three point seven tons. From the previous hauler from January to March twenty twenty-four is four hundred and fifteen point seven tons, which is a hundred and eighteen tons more recycled in the first quarter. And this goes back to having all the right trucks, right equipment on the routes, and being able to make sure trash is picking up trash, recycle is picking up recycle. It's going to make these numbers continue to increase as well. Community outreach, May the twenty-second, we done the town hall meeting out there. Actually, this one got changed. That's a different slide there, but you know, June twenty-sixth town hall meeting was, we were there was the Windy Hill School. We were out there for that. July twenty-fourth, we're doing the town hall Ferguson Auditorium. These is pictures from our first part of our community outreach that we were promised to do for four events on. This is the first one in Fairview. Went over well, the kids enjoyed playing on the touch of truck, getting up in it, playing around. We gave out some prizes for the kids, played some games with them, so it was a big success as well. Unless I got open for any questions?
Thank you. And any questions from my colleagues?
I just wanted to say thank you, Louis. I appreciate how responsive you are, and especially with getting the call center with everybody employed there, and so people can call in locally. And I've definitely heard that that's been positive and been an improvement.
Yes, it definitely has, like, the escalation, so they can just come get me right in and there. I'm a door down, so I don't have to get it through an email or something like that. That's been a huge, a huge success, for sure.
This might be just a small question, but there's a differential of about two thousand people who are not previously signed up from the private, prior provider to y'all, thirty-eight to thirty-six thousand. Where did that number come from, just out of curiosity?
That's what we have in our NABU salt ship. So the original number was given to us from Waste Pro. I guess it was given to the county, and we had that number. But off of our numbers, by the cart that we delivered, and what we have on our route numbers that are counted, that's what we're, the difference we have.
Thank you. And you said you're going to be present on July twenty-fourth at Ferguson for another town hall?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. I look forward to seeing it continue to trend down in terms of complaints.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Guys, have a good day.
You as well. Next up, we have our Helene update to be introduced by our county manager, Avril Pender.
Thank you, sir. And as always, we'll start with debris from Dane Peterson.
Hello again, commissioners. So we are wanting to provide an update on the debris removal process. Let you know how that is going. So debris removal total, that top line is total amount from all the DFA missions. So three million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three cubic yards have been removed to date. And we throw a lot of these summary numbers around, and I think it's interesting, perspective wise, when you think about an Olympic swimming pool, right, that's around thirty-three hundred cubic yards in an Olympic swimming pool. So think about one thousand of those Olympic-sized swimming pools. That's, that's kind of appropriation to how much debris has been managed to date through these programs. So it's, there's been a lot of material that was generated through this storm that's been managed to date. Right-of-way debris mission, around one point five million cubic yards was removed from that. That mission is, is complete. Private property debris removal, so the mission was extended through the end of this month into August first. FEMA and the Corps have all applications for review. The debris removal contractor to Ashbrit, so all the packets that staff had received, Tetra Tech had helped us vet, all those packets are sitting now with Ashbrit. They have all those packets with them now. To date, there have been four thousand, six hundred and forty-seven sites cleaned up, sites being parcels on the private property side. So that leaves us with around four hundred plus remaining properties to be cleaned up out of those applications that were submitted. So things are on track, per the expedited timeline, and, you know, all, all the partners feel, feel good that that, that will be completed by that, by that timeline. Around a hundred and sixty-one thousand cubic yards of debris have been removed through the PPDR program. And as a reminder, if residents have questions or concerns, we continue to want to push this, this email for folks to be able to reach out to us, and also be able to have a touch point with Army Corps of Engineers, FEMA. So we're all looking at these situations that arise and trying to, to get those resolved as they're coming in. So that's the debris management at helene@buncombecounty.gov. Waterway debris mission, I spoke with Ashbrit today. All equipment is now out of the water. There are four remaining tolls, so tolls being the temporary offloading sites that are still hauling some minimal amount of debris out, but they're hoping to have those remaining tolls closed by the end of the week. So waterway is certainly substantially complete at this point. So demolition, we talk about this in, in our monthly updates every month. And demolition is still under review with our federal and state partners. The timeline for demolition, I know we've bounced around on that, but it's, it's still really a hard date to define on when that is actually going to get started with the demolition. There are funding questions that our FEMA partners continue to provide us information, how those talks are going, but that has still not been resolved as far as if the demolition is going to be occurring on the direct federal assistance side. So those are, those are daily talks we're having, we're making sure we're staying in touch with how the process is going, how the applications are flowing. So that's where we're at right now with the demo process. All the demolition applications, so if you remember, the demo packets were included with the PPDR application. So me as a resident, if I had a structure on my property that was eligible for demo, when I signed out my PPDR for right of entry, I checked the box for demo. So that's how that process went through. Those were vetted by staff, Tetra Tech, that went to FEMA, to the Corps. And really now, a lot of those are sitting with, at the state level through SHPO or environmental historic preservation review. We do have quite a few of those applications that do have potential impacts with environmental historical. So there's additional review and additional timeline on those. So temporary debris sites, I think another positive update for today is that, well, I would say major milestone is accurate. So the temporary debris sites should be closing out by the end of this month. There are none of our temporary debris sites in the county that are still receiving incoming debris, except for the Incasite, which is actually in the city of Asheville. It was used as a joint, so some county material, if it made sense, would go there, and the city material would go there as well. So that's the only, only location that's taking debris. The rest of them have closed down to incoming. Now they're processing the debris that's on site and moving that out as soon as possible. So we're anticipating full closeout by the end of this month. I'm thankful to see that.
Before you move on, commissioners, when we had an active EOC, every time there was a major milestone this big, we would always give kudos to the team. So I want to take a pause because you have been inundated with emails and concerns about when are we going to close these sites? And what we're saying to you today is no more incoming, we're just processing what's there now with the intent to have it done by June thirty. So I want to take a moment to give a huge shout out to the debris team and the entire EOC, and everyone has been working on Helene to get debris picked up, because this is a huge milestone. And with that, I will start to clap for that. Good job, guys.
Everybody. Thank you for that, county manager. I'm sorry, went too far. So, and we're also continuing to investigate vegetative process opportunities for our communities. I know we had several county staff went to visit a pilot program that's going on in Haywood County to look at a bio, biochar system. And we, we got some information. Cassie took a lot of good notes for us. I'm still reading through a lot of those and talking to other vendors as well. But I think it's exciting technology and seeing how, what, what, what room, what angle that could work for us moving forward as we investigate those technologies. It was a Tiger Cat carbonizer that, that was in Haywood County that the group went to look at. Couple of points on that, you know, around a million dollars, a little bit plus to, to purchase one of those. Requires about seven FTEs or full-time staff to operate, and requires around two hundred and forty gallons of water per hour. Now, I have talked to some vendors on the water input side where there are some systems that can capture the water and recirculate it. So that helps with the water input side for sure. And, you know, biomass power plants is another opportunity that we're looking at. Hog fuel, a type of wood waste that can be used as a fuel. Mulch has been a challenge, honestly, in this whole region since Evergreen closed. That was a, that was a, that was a pivot point, you know, for a lot of our local businesses as well as county and city governments. So we continue to explore those options at the local level, but also with our DEQ partners at the state. We're all interested in finding solutions to get the, the best, most beneficial use of our, of our wood waste. We're also looking at firewood programs in, in, in concert with some local nonprofits to see what opportunities there are for those as well. So I want to make sure that the board knew that we will continue to investigate these opportunities. And as far as that goes, that is the debris. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
I've got, sorry, I've got one question. I'm not sure if you guys can answer this, but I recall outside of the government debris removal operation, there were some private entities that applied for permits for burn curtains. I don't know if those ever got installed or not, but are they, I guess, A, have, were they installed? And B, do we know anything about their ceasing operation for those sites?
Yeah, so I know of two in my mind that I know were in use. One was at the Buncombe County landfill. We worked early on through our procurement, procurement team as well as North Carolina Emergency Management. We sourced that early on. We just decommissioned that, Commissioner, I want to say a couple of weeks ago. So that, that has been decommissioned on that site. And SDR, let's see, town of Weaverville was, they, they utilized state contract SDR for the debris removal needs. And SDR, the intention was to set up a curtain burner at that location, which was out at Rims Creek. And I don't want to speak incorrectly if that's still active, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I know air quality and our fire marshal team certainly had touch points with those. So I think we can get some more information on that end.
We'll bring back the information on that to be accurate. Correct. So we would need to touch base with Ashley to see if they're still in operations and what happened.
Okay, thank you, Louis.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one question. When you were talking about demos, the hazard mitigation for those that are doing acquisition or anything with that, do they have a whole separate process for demos? Okay, that's completely separate.
It is, yeah. And FEMA's been clear, when, when we're thinking about demo, we know it's in flow and kind of inline process-wise with PPDR, it is not technically debris. So there is a lot of back and forth. For example, twenty-six of the sites, so we have a spreadsheet that FEMA continues, updates and sends us all the time, where are our packets in the process? There are twenty-six of those right now that are needing additional photos, which I feel like we've took thousands at this point around those prop. But it, it's that level of detail and that level of information from the property owner, maybe the lien holders, wherever that situation is on purpose. So it, it certainly takes time. And then when it gets to SHPO and there's environmental, historical, those type of situations that arise, that does extend those review timelines.
Thank you. And it's definitely good news on the debris sites and the fact that those are coming to an end. So yeah, definitely thank you and your entire team for all the tremendous work.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Thanks to all the team, absolutely.
The next topic today is legislative and state programs, where Helene and Tim is going to do that.
And while Tim steps up, Avril, I didn't want it to be lost on how big a moment that is based on the community concern we've had from people. A lot of folks have waited a long time, and this is a huge moment. So I know it won't make the headlines per se, but thank you for all the work that you and your team did on that.
All right. Good afternoon, y'all. Just a, a quick update on Helene legislation. As many of you know, there was an additional Helene relief bill that was passed about two weeks ago, right before July fourth. And so with that third relief bill, that brings our total state support to about one point nine billion dollars here in the state of North Carolina. That's, of course, separate from the federal support. This current package was about five hundred million dollars. And I'm going to spend a little bit of time going over some of the highlights from that package here in the next few slides. So that bill signed into law June twenty-sixth. It's about seven hundred million dollars total, five hundred related to direct recovery, and then two hundred million earmarked for future relief. There's a number of areas that this will support, and, you know, the slide kind of details those. I'm going to spend a little bit more time on some specific programs. But two areas I wanted to go ahead and highlight that were not included in this relief bill are small business relief grants as well as local government revenue replacement. And so those are areas that we've consistently asked for but have not seen come through. In terms of a, a few examples, highlights of relief that has been provided. Off the top, you know, we're, we're going to track these programs to see when they're released. A lot of the details have not been provided to date. But twenty-five million dollars for agricultural crop loss. Additionally, three million dollars for landslide mapping. Eight million dollars to DPI for public school repairs. Seventy million dollars for a new program related to local government capital. This program in particular, brand new, looking forward to the details, managed by the Office of Budget. But these funds are meant to be grants to local governments for projects that were not eligible for FEMA reimbursement through a PA program. So if it's eligible for PA, it's not eligible for this program. For that reason, I expect that we're going to have to wait a good amount of time before we'll know how to utilize these funds as we wait for the PA process to shake out. Additionally, eighteen million dollars to the state fire marshal's office for fire department grants of up to fifty thousand dollars. Another thirty-one million dollars for public school facilities. And those are just a few examples of, of the programs that have been established in the current state disaster relief bill, HB ten twelve. While we're here, just wanted to go ahead and separate ourselves from legislation, but plug some of the state programs that are currently underway. Many of you have been aware, since early this year, North Carolina's been handling disaster case management. For those that are interested in that programming, we've got a hyperlink here for you. Additionally, wanted to continue to remind folks about the Renew NC program. And so this is the state's program to renovate and repair single-family housing. That application has been open for almost a month now. Folks are, can go directly to that website to apply. Additionally, the state has sent, set up multiple locations. There's three of them across western North Carolina, one of which is here in the city of Asheville at Bingham Road, where folks can apply for this Renew NC program. Finally, the state's private road and bridge program continues to be open. That application window's been open for some time, so encourage people to continue to apply. I know there are a lot of folks that are moving forward there. And we've begun to hear more about this program locally in terms of those applications turning into actual projects. At this point, I'll see if there's any squawk, any questions?
Any questions for Tim?
Tim, I'd like to add, I had the opportunity as a result of our meeting Monday for the western North Carolina, you know, relief committee. I talked to two of the legislators there, and we talked about the upcoming, the next relief bill. And now they're getting more heat when it comes to small business relief and the revenue replacement. And I think we're getting a lot of help, especially on that, from the small counties, too. So that's helping, you know, not only us. I think we'll hear more about that, I hope, yeah.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. And as a refresher for the rest of the board and the public, this was the Governor's Helene Recovery Committee, which is a public meeting, meets on a monthly basis. And Senator Heiss specifically shared an update that he was extremely confident in another relief bill, and then spent some time talking specifically about small business grants being a part of that. He did add to that complication that they're looking to the feds, to the federal government, excuse me, to provide some support on that front. But that was all really good to hear. Thank you for that.
Got one question. I'm sorry, Chair. I was just hoping to pull on something you said, maybe you could opine on the part where you said we might have to wait a long time to find out how we can use these funds as we wait for the PA situation to shake out. Could you say a little bit more about what, what you mean by that?
Yep. And I'm speaking in generalizations.
Understood.
You know, we, we know that the, the PA process will take some time as we're submitting projects, working on those projects, going through FEMA reviews. And so as we, as the state looks to avoid duplication of benefits, I expect that they're going to want to make sure that those projects are pretty clean. So it may take us some time to work through our projects on our end, to determine that FEMA eligibility at a very granular level before we'll be able to say emphatically that this project is not eligible for FEMA funding. That said, we're always going to be creative and explore our options to see where we can pursue these funds as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
And on the, the single house, single-family housing? And on the, the single house, single-family housing, are they also able to go to our, are they also able to go to Cox Avenue to our Helene Recovery Center?
That's correct.
Okay, so there's definitely somebody there with the information that can help them as well.
That is correct. And what I would say, more to follow on that, I don't know that we can expect the Renew NC folks to be at our Cox Avenue HRC forever. You know, they've picked their destinations and we'll continue to provide updates on that. I just don't want to set that expectation.
Okay, and.
But they can go there right now.
They can go now. And is there, could we have someone from this organization come and tell us more about the program so that we can be better informed and be able to ask them some questions about it as well?
Absolutely. I'll take that.
That on our next list.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? And if not, thank you very much, Tim.
Samantha will be giving us an update on, or funded, Helene funded.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Okay, so we're here this afternoon to give you a brief update in regards to the opportunities that are in front of us and the efforts we're taking to secure funding to support recovery from the impacts of Tropical Storm Helene. As you'll see on this slide, our approach is rooted in strategic grant-seeking, proactive fund administration and coordination across the various departments, agencies, and our community partners. As of today, we have identified 113 prospective funding opportunities that are aligned with the recovery needs that we have currently identified. From those, we have submitted 26 applications and those are spanning across federal, state, and philanthropic sources. So far, we have secured seven awards and that includes five grants and two loans, which totals $20.4 million. And that is not inclusive of the FEMA PA figures you'll see on the bottom half of that slide. The awards that have been secured include competitive grants and non-grant financing tools such as the North Carolina Cash Flow Loan, which alone in itself has been brought to nearly $14 million with more expected through the House Bill 1012 that Assistant County Manager Tim Love was just sharing details with you about. This demonstrates our intentional focus on not just pursuing available grants, but also maximizing all external funding streams to support our communities. On the bottom half of this slide, we have a few high-level details on the FEMA Public Assistance Program. So in parallel to the funding sources listed above, we continue our engagement with FEMA through the Public Assistance Program. Currently, we have documented 68 eligible projects under PA, three of which have been obligated to date. Obligated means that they have been approved by FEMA and FEMA is running through the process of sending that money or I will say, opening that money availability to the state. And then the state would then be pending to transfer that money to the county. So far, the state has been able to approve $1.4 million of those three obligated projects. And that includes one landslide project and the amount of money that we retained from the expedited debris removal project. Continuing on other funding that we received, going into a little more detail on those other sources identified on the previous slide. We have received $788,000 from the Community Development Block Grant Declared Disaster Recovery Fund, and that was directly from the city of Asheville's resources that they had. We have received an additional $2.8 million with CDBG Recovery Housing Program and that was in collaboration with ABCCM on an expansion at Transformation Village. That is a very critical funding source since ABCCM is also rebuilding the VRQ or the Veteran Quarters. Also, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Hurricane Helene Disaster Recovery Fund. We received $2.2 million, that of which supported the DSNAP program, Adult Services and Child Welfare Systems related to Helene response activities. We were able to reallocate $657,000 from ARPA, the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. And one of the small funds that we've received is to support the Small Area Plan for Swananoa, and that's at $10,000. And I've also already detailed the information for the North Carolina Cash Flow Loan. On the horizon, there, as you will remember, there were 113 prospects that we have identified thus far. We have honed in on quite a few of those to begin adding to that 26 applications that we've already submitted. Here are a few of those. So the hazard mitigation, or wait, hold on, I think, potential funding sources. Okay, these are the potential funding sources, okay. So within the CDBG program, we will be working alongside or with applying for that resource with the city's allotment and directly with the state. We also applied to Congressman Edwards Congressional Community Project Funding. And we have applied with Dogwood Health Trust Leverage Fund. There is the multiple applications that we submitted to support 657 properties with Emergency Watershed Protection Program thus far. And we're looking into the Flood Mitigation Assistance Program, which helps expedite funding to the acquisition property applications that have been submitted with the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. That program literally is supposed to get the money in the hands of the homeowners swiftly. There's also the North Carolina Small Biz Program and again, the Cash Flow Loan is on the horizon with more dollars coming our way as well. And I guess I'll go back here. And there was one more item that did not make it on the slide that we wanted to make sure you were aware of and that we're actively looking into and working with partners on ensuring that we support the monumental initiative within the Economic Development Administration, known as EDA. So I want to emphasize that this recovery strategy is grounded in compliance and accountability and we are trying to leverage every dollar to rebuild not only what was damaged, but to hopefully rebuild back better. We're actively coordinating across departments, tracking progress in real time, and we're ensuring stewardship of all the public resources available to us at this time. I am ready for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners?
Well, keep up the good work. We need all the help we can get, yeah.
Thank you.
We want to commend the staff for what you're doing because we can't always depend on the government, slow as they are. And what really is frustrating for me on the Governor's Committee, whenever they talk about housing, you know, replacing the houses that have been destroyed, they don't talk in months. They talk in years.
Exactly.
And that's.
Yes.
Going to be a challenge for us locally.
That's why we're very excited that there is the Swift Current Program within FMA to help move that piece faster. Thank you.
We were talking to some constituents in Black Mountain yesterday and this did come up. They asked about how many grants or loans we've applied for and I think not seeing that number, people don't realize how much work is going in behind the scenes. And it is helpful to see, one, you've identified 113 and, two, this is what we're doing and, three, this astronomical number of 20.4 million is way more than we previously had to work with. So thank you to your team for all the work y'all are doing.
Thank you for your support.
And I'll just echo that. Thank you for waiting through the alphabet soup that is all these programs. It is really confusing, so thank you so much.
It is very much, yes, thank you.
Commissioners, our last topic then is Recovery Office and Rachel Sawyer is going to do that.
Thank you very much. And if I'll just, if you'll allow me a point of privilege briefly to emphasize how happy we are that the commissioners supported the creation of that grant administrator position a couple of years ago. Samantha Bauer serves in that role through the Strategic Partnerships Office and we're able to deliver support to all of the programmatic departments that are managing all of that work with Ag and Land and Parks and Recreation, Emergency Services and Health and Human Services. So really across our, across our county department, departments. And she's got the support of a couple of grant managers behind her as well as the other county support functions like the Budget Office and the Finance Office, et cetera. So thank you for supporting those foundational administrative services that help us to be successful. I have another update that's on a similar vein in terms of investing in the structures necessary to help us carry out our work. So I'm Rachel Sawyer and I've been loaned from the Strategic Partnerships Director role into the Recovery Lead, serving as Helene Recovery Lead along with a partner as a Deputy Lead in Jeremiah Leroy. And you've heard from both of us over the past several, several months as we have moved out of response mode and into recovery mode. And we are on the horizon of a transition. We thank the commissioners for the creation of a position in the FY '26 Budget for Helene Recovery Officer. That position was posted and has closed and we're underway with the interviewing process, feeling really excited about having somebody here full-time that can support, I hear thunder, that can support those departments, carrying out our many projects to try to move the needle on our recovery goals. There's also a mention here about establishment of a recovery office. It's our intention to have structures in place so that that Helene Recovery Officer has project management support. We will have some projects that are capital and construction in nature, some projects that are programmatic in nature, and certainly a lot of additional grant compliance activities that will come with each of those projects and the various funds that we receive to try to make them possible. So still working with the county manager's office to think through what that could look like and hopefully when we've got a new person on board as a Helene Recovery Officer, we'll be ready to come back to you with more specifics about the development of that office. In addition, quick update about our Helene Recovery Plan. That's the primary project that I am helping shepherd at this period of time. You've heard from us before about this project. You'll remember that we went out to the community back in the spring as part of the Envision Buncombe Survey, which gathered community sentiment to inform our strategic plan and also to inform the creation of this Helene Recovery Plan. You heard from Jeremiah and Kathleen, I think, in the month of June about what the results of the Envision Buncombe Survey were, the kinds of things the public were saying to the county are important to them in a, in a successful recovery from Tropical Storm Helene. We've taken that and are working on project development. You'll recall that we are doing this in collaboration with the city of Asheville in each of the five towns. So independently, we're coming up with our project lists that each of our jurisdictions would intend to carry out as part of recovery. And also, we're working together on what projects might be cross-jurisdictional that we work on together. You will next see us in the month of August and the commissioners at that time will have an opportunity to preview the project list. Let us know if it seems like we're on the right track, any input you all may have prior to when we bring forward a draft plan for public comment, which we intend to do in September. So this is moving right along and the, the sort of finish line and also the starting line is November of 2025 when we will bring a final plan modified by any public comment that has come in for your consideration for adoption. As you heard from the previous presentations, we're not waiting for a plan to be stamped as final to get going on recovery projects. A lot of that is defined by timelines. So when we heard the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, had a two-week notice for letters of interest to go into the state, we jumped up on that opportunity and put forward projects that seemed like a great fit and we're in the process of aligning our recovery plan and all of those various funding sources to be sort of a cohesive and aligned product, which also aligns to the things that you all have articulated through the strategic plan and the comprehensive land use plan and the Hazard Mitigation Plan previously, so many plans. That is all that I have prepared for updates for you today.
Thank you, Rachel. Any questions from commissioners?
I've got a quick one. I'm curious, not because I think we'll be awarded all of it, but I'm just curious if you know off the top of your head, in the total dollar amount of letters of interest into the HMGP program we've submitted.
Yes, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. So I'm going to back up and explain that it has a lot of different pieces. And the one, the one piece I was referring to is the infrastructure projects. That's where we as county government apply for things that we're going to carry out and that's separate from the.
Right.
Acquisition and elevation ones we were talking about separately.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
That's not for you, but just for anyone following along. Anyway, so infrastructure projects, in terms of the letters of interest, we submitted 29 across six or seven different categories totaling roughly $98 million. I don't have updates for you on which ones have been received favorably from the state. The letters go to the state and then the state submits to FEMA. We are going back and forth with them where they've got some questions and rescoping may be needed for certain projects.
While I have you.
Sir?
At a, at a high level, I'm picturing someone in an office in Raleigh reading these. Is it their discretion over what's kind of eligible? Run me through.
For, for HMGP specifically?
Yeah, like who gets to decide.
So it's a FEMA program and has very specific and technical criteria for what's eligible. We are working with our contracted disaster recovery contractor, Tetra Tech, who has experts in hazard mitigation grants, who know that guidance inside and out as well. So we look at the eligible categories, for example, secondary power sources and define projects, secondary power sources on critical facilities. So what's the definition of a critical facility and which ones do we think would qualify based on the rationale that those facilities were used during Tropical Storm Helene response? And put forward what we think is eligible. They have an expert there who's reviewing those grants. I think there was actually a committee, but we have one point of contact that's coming back and forth with us on those ones that are clearly eligible and then those ones that might have questions, such as wind hardening and floodproofing, that's another section. Passing the ECA Benefit Cost Analysis is highly technical and that's necessary in order to qualify. And so it gets into a fairly detailed conversation with them about trying to craft projects that they believe are a fit. So ultimately, the state has the discretion to be able to forward whichever projects they choose, but their rubric is FEMA's rubric. Yes, and if, if you've got more detailed questions or a specific circumstance in mind, we're glad to gather other information for you.
Thank you.
It gets technical.
Any other questions from commissioners? If not.
Well, I have one, but I think it's probably for Avril because it's about the, the other part of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program because I am getting some questions of where we are in that process. Can you just give us a quick, excuse me, status update on that?
And we can add that to the next month's update, but the quick answer is it goes to the state. We can add that to the next month's update, but the quick answer is it goes to the state and the state is still working through in all the reviews that Rachel just went through for our projects. They're also doing the same thing on those buyouts or elevations. So we don't have a real answer. They've been telling us that they hope to have a closing process and actually give people some money sometime this summer, but we don't have an answer of what time this summer looks like. We still don't have an update on that. But we can have the folks that work on that on a daily basis, well, part of their regular job now, we can get them to bring an update to you next time.
Okay, thank you.
And a bit more detail on that, there've been, they're forwarding them in batches. We've had two batches of residential acquisitions go forward and we're waiting on the third batch. When I say go forward, that's from the state to FEMA with all of the packets complete. We're waiting on a third and larger batch of acquisition applications. So they have not yet gotten to the elevations. That's one piece of sort of prioritization to keep in mind. And then each batch will have, will move forward on its own timeline. I don't remember the numbers that were in each batch, but the, the first one was smaller. So we will, once those awards come in, then we will work with the state and the, and the property owners to move through the next steps. And we, because it's a state-centric model, we don't always have the detail about where something is. Timelines are tricky to predict, but we can confirm whether or not we've already processed their application. So just have them reach out. And the Helene Resource Center is a great place to start.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
That, that was our last one, but Rachel just raised a great point. The Helene Resource Center, that is still the best avenue for people to ask questions. A lot of the things we're doing now is at the state level, so we have to refer them to the state, but at least we can tell them the state number and who to contact at the state to get the answer. But that number is still the best ans, number, which is eight-two-eight-two-five-zero-sixty-one-hundred.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have an update from our Code Enforcement Team. Jason Rogers is here to join us. Welcome, Jason. We look forward to hearing from you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank y'all for having me. I'm here today to talk about the Code Enforcement Team and its makeup and, and what we do pretty regularly at this point. The overview and purpose of the team, the team membership, compliance process, successes and challenges and some opportunities in the future for the team. You know, the team was established twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two to manage multiple departmental nuisance cases that in a consistent way that we could all work cooperatively at one time on. We leveraged varied expertise between the departments to develop creative and trauma-informed solutions to complex issues, coordinate with outside agencies. There's a lot of state agencies and different products that deal directly with each department's pieces that this team brings together at one time as a group. Once a complaint is levied and it becomes an internal staff process for each department and internally, we try to restrict involvement beyond that to just keep the fidelity of the process about us and move forward as best we can to keep neighborhoods safe and, and move them forward. And then we have standing meetings for review and feedback and ensure timely onsite visits and meet with owners and occupiers just so we can really keep informed amongst the different departments involved. The violation types is there's building and building regulation problems, there's illegal burning, wastewater, fire prevention, fire protection, solid waste, junk and trash, and zoning and development ordinances with junk yards, erosion control and junk vehicles. One member from each of the areas of compliance expertise in the departments is air quality, county legal, environmental health, fire marshal permits and inspections, planning and development, solid waste, environmental control. But beyond that, we have support members from DHHS and that's a large support. There's many different departments in there that support different functions to help us with different things. The homelessness coordinator and the Sheriff's Office has a lot of input and collaboration with us as well. A lot of our sites cross over each other quite a bit. Each department has its own individual complaint process. A lot of complaints are, are simply go to, to a department, the department handles that complaint like they do any other. It's whenever a complaint is received and we either receive it in multiples between the departments or a compliance officer goes out and recognizes more violations that may not be in their normal purview, then they bring that to the other department and the Code Enforcement Team to work collaboratively together to try to fix. If there's more than two violations of different departments, we try to bring that to the Code Enforcement Team and kind of triage how we're gonna deal with those as we go through. Prior to each meeting, we try to put out an agenda so that everyone can go and review the site. The, these sites can change daily. So we try to do that the week that we're going to have a meeting so we're as updated as possible about the conditions onsite so that we can figure out the issues as we're there. Each complaint is reviewed individually during the meeting. These meetings can be very long to go through each little piece of what it is and try to find the best approach. Everybody brings a little something different to the table to try to figure out the best way to find compliance. We're about remedying the situations and finding that compliance. This is a complaint case chart by department. On the next slide, since February of twenty-twenty-two, there's been two thousand one hundred and ninety-two complaints logged in our Excel program for these departments. Of those complaints, a hundred and seven properties have met the criteria of two or more violations and have been reviewed by the Code Enforcement Team. I run the numbers on it and we're around three hundred and thirty complaints are encompassed in these hundred and seven properties. So about fifteen percent of all complaints that come in find their way to the level of Code Enforcement Team. As of right now, the last agenda, we had nine properties with RV park issues, junk vehicles, junk trash and debris, fire marshals with a structural fire, a building condemnation and environmental health sewage issues on the last meeting that we had. Here's some success stories. This is a property that really plagued the community for some time. It was damaged pretty severely in the twenty-twenty-one Tropical Storm Fred flooding. We worked through and this property had been cleaned up completely before this flood. Thank goodness. This is a property that had found its way to become a storage and a haul site for junk tires. And it had thousands and thousands of junk tires all over it and it had become a homeless encampment around that. And so there was building fires with the tires and such. Once the team got wind of it and got working on it, it all got cleaned up and looked very nice afterwards. The next one is a, a property that had an enormous amount of violations and enormous amount of problems beyond Code Enforcement Team. It dealt with the Sheriff's Office quite a bit. Everybody worked and had a huge team effort and got this property cleaned up, which now segues into some of our challenges because after the hurricane, then this property is owned by an out-of-state individual and people started moving on to this property, setting up buildings to live in and encampments and such because there's nobody watching over it. Which brings us to properties that come into compliance. They are a huge monitoring issue because they seem to want to edge their way back into violation. It's really hard to hold on to them. These are very complex issues, various disciplines that take time, lots of time to remedy. Takes a lot of time for legal to find, just people to notify sometimes can be a challenge in itself. There's all sorts of social issues with poverty, substance abuse and homelessness. That really compounded occupants of the properties are typically, or a lot of times, not the owner of the property. Some owners are very absentee. Some owners are aware, either afraid or not willing to do with it. There's familiar family relations make property owners reluctant. They, they don't want to kick their family off properties even if it is causing problems. It, it, it's very difficult situations. There's potential legislative changes all the time that you have to be very aware of that changes our enforcement abilities. The, the resource intensive, I mean, these take a lot of time and staff time and follow-up is very difficult for, for every department involved. And funds are often needed to bring effective remedies. Sadly, a lot of these you have to battle with legal abilities in courts and all of that takes finances. And then there's the, also the need to clean the properties up and try to find a way forward. The opportunities, the comprehensive review of the team's process and full execution of updated standard operating procedures as a whole, evaluations of current county ordinances that are outdated or need refinement for enforcement purposes. There's always opportunities where things have changed or new case law that gives us ability to deal with some of these situations differently. Identify and fill procedural gaps to increase efficiency and enhance customer service and achieve intended outcomes. Move forward with completion of Excel implementations so that everybody would have information at one location. And then continue to increase opportunities for collaboration across departments and community partners to achieve and maintain compliance once it has been achieved. This one's a big one. We, we've had a lot of, of community partners come along with us, especially on the social issue side with Department of Health and Human Services help to help some of these situations and help us remedy them. There's been some really good partnerships to help us with some of that. From there, I'll ask for any questions or discussion.
Well, first of all, Jason, I want to say thank you to you and everybody that works on this because it's really gotta be one of the toughest jobs in the county, having to work on some of these issues. And, and through the years, as you know, I've, I've referred several to you because of the, the area of the county that I, that I represent. So I very much appreciate and what all you do and, and the challenge of it. And I have just a, a few questions. The, and it sounds like there at the end, you, there's one thing that I see, right? We sometimes see there's mental health issues, there's economic distress, there's all of these type of things going on. So it sounds like you are referring that to others to kind of try to help with that, the underlying causes of sometimes what's causing these issues.
Yeah, you know, I've made this statement before. Most of us are enforcement people, you know, that are on the team. It, it's the, the Health and Human Services side, it's the homeless director, people like that that have the real outreaches into community partners. You know, we also have other programs like Community Paramedic and Opioid Crisis Teams that they help us bring together and send out to talk as well to, to help the underlying issues. And, you know, these people are citizens as well and they deserve our help. So we try to do that as we try to remedy a situation.
Okay, thank you. And some, some of the things that I kind of hear ongoing from, from community members, and I'm, I'm curious if you have any specific thoughts. The, the tires is definitely one that I hear often actually about people piling tires up like really close to the road. And so it impacts visibility too. So that seems to be an ongoing issue. The, I'm hearing a lot from folks about even more so now, like around erosion control and erosion control impacting neighbors because of depending on how one person, you know, however they, however they do or don't do there on their property and then that impacts the other neighbors, you know, around their driveways and various things. And so that's another one that I hear rather often. And I'll stop there because it looks like Nate's coming too and let you answer those and then I have a couple, couple more questions.
Okay, so on tires, there, there is through solid waste, they, they would need to remedy those tires. They do also if they're gonna be there, like tire shops and those type places, they have to treat them to make sure there's not mosquito infestations and that sort of thing. At a tire shop, obviously where they would have tires. But the other ones, solid waste, environmental control does deal with, with tire issues if they do come about. So if you'd like to refer that to me, I can get that to them.
Okay.
And then Nate may want to answer the erosion? Or would you like for me to?
One other note on tires too is we have to make sure we check in with NC DOT. We've had instances where tires are actually stacked within a right of way. So that becomes a public safety issue if somebody crashes into those. So that's another part of it is we do have to work with a number of outside partners, including NC DOT quite more frequently than you think. Erosion control, especially now post-Helene, we're seeing an absolute monumental increase in, in complaints about erosion control, but it covers a gamut. Landslides obviously has caused a lot of issues. The thunder over here, not here, where we're getting these two-inch, three-inch events in the afternoon, they are causing runoff issues. Now, sometimes that doesn't mean that we can do anything about those particularly because we're not dealing with our typical open construction site erosion control runoff. We're dealing with the aftermath of damaged properties, specifically ones that are always that sit upslope from another neighborhood. So if you've had a road washout, obviously you're gonna see sediment lead the site. So we're doing our best to try to give advice, but hey, you might want to hydro seed that. Hey, you might want to do this. But when it comes to erosion control, our, our minimum threshold for an erosion control permit is one acre. So it's not customary when we're talking about damages and seeing runoff sometimes from, from some of these extreme storm events, they don't necessarily fit in perfectly what, with what the erosion control program was meant to, to do. So we're also seeing a lot of stormwater complaints too that are based on events like this where you get sheet flow and especially ones out into a DOT road as well. So again, having that close relationship with NC DOT is key.
Thank you. The, um, one thing that's, that's come up for me is, you know, often it's a neighbor who reaches out, right? And either reaches out to you or through me and then I forward it on to you all. And I know, and I think you made it clear in this, right? Like once you start this, you're not, you're not communicating with the neighbors and you're staying focused on the project. And I, and I appreciate that and understand it. Often what happens though is since they don't hear, they continue to email me and feel like nothing's being done. And so I just wonder if there's a way to at least initially make it clear to them that it is being. Now, and I know very well that some of them email us multiple times even after you all have told them that. So that is a challenge. Like I know you do communicate that sometimes, but I just wondered, like what is the process when it has been a neighbor that's reached out with a complaint? Do you at least always let them know initially that you've got it and you're gonna look into it?
Yeah, I mean, i- if someone calls in a complaint and if it's a Code Enforcement Team complaint and it rises to that level, they'll probably know because we try to do those complaints as a team. We, we don't try to go as individuals and be onsite singularly. We'll go four, five, six vehicles at a time with bunches and bunches of people. Obviously, if anyone calls us, the neighbor that would be the complainant, we would always fill them in with where we are in the process after we've started. We try to inform them as we go, if they call and tact us to, to do so. We, we try to keep them informed best we can. Sometimes we utilize their property for access to the other property. So they would know we were there because we would announce that we were there.
Okay, thank you. And the other, let's see. So is there, oh, with the ongoing compliance because that, that I have definitely seen is an ongoing issue, right? Like we see kind of the, the cycle with some properties. And I just wonder like, is there, is there any one, like a any one, like, a community partner that we could work with? I just think about the amount of time that staff spends, like, working on one of these, getting it into compliance, and then next, you know, six months later, we're right back there, starting that over. And I just, I just wonder, like, is there a way that we can do something else to where we're not just cycling back in and continuing to spend so much staff time on those same ones? Like, are there any other resources or anybody we contract with, or any, anything out there that could help in that realm?
Commissioner Wells, I can speak for the, the, usually when we have a case that we've, that we take to court, we usually end up getting some kind of court judgment that basically prohibits them, uh, from re, um, damaging. And we would probably enforce that through holding the person in contempt of court. Normally, if the county has had to expend money, and sometimes that's in the form of bringing dumpsters to the property or things like that, it's really a big thing for us after we've spent money to fix it, either to recover the money that we've spent, and at the same time, making sure that they don't revi- or start violating it again, because then all that effort that we did to clean up. So those are, those are the two, you know, I guess, legal ways that we have. But, you know, sometimes when we have things that are resolved, where there's no litigation involved, it does require staff just following up, or hopefully, a change in ownership sometimes also is helpful in, in prohibiting or from having new violations occur on that same parcel.
Commissioner, I think, to your point, we started this process to at least get things into compliance. We're now at the stage where we need to go to the next level. And whether that's the money for a contract, to have people to monitor these, or more staff to do that. But when we started this, because we had so many, two, over 2,000 complaints, we were trying to get our hands around that. So now that we're there, we need to think about what is our next step. And in my mind, the next step would be either a contract or staff that can help with that monitor and help engage with that homeowner, to make sure they're staying up, and not keep the same staff that is just trying to do the enforcement piece. So that piece is missing. If you recall, last year, we tried to introduce a new program, where we would partner with some not mental health people to help not have people be out of their homes. And so we wouldn't be demolition, demolishing a home or condemning a home, but they can give those services. And that's one of the things that went early on the chopping block after Haleen, because we just didn't have the time and capacities to get that done. But that is one thing that will still be on our list, and still a project that we would want to see done, to make sure we don't keep reviolating, I think is the word, Tim, he's, he's calling it, violations or damaging that property over and over. Because they become frequent failures at that point, and it's just, at some point, it becomes demoralizing that we keep going back to the same house. And that's to your point, you keep hearing from the same neighbors over and over, as if nothing is happening. So the next step in that will be other staff or contract for the monitoring piece.
Thank you.
And that's going to be revenue or money.
Right. Well, it sounds like a, an important thing for us to be looking at as we're going into this next budget year, and whenever we can do that. And then, my, I think my final question for you is, um, are there any specific, from, from what you've seen now, since you've been doing this over these past few years, are there any specific updates to the ordinances that you feel would be very helpful with, with what you're working on? And if you don't know right now, that's okay, but I'm just curious if there's some specific ones off the top of your head.
There's no specific at the very moment. Um, everything lives within each department. It's something that we're, we might spend time with. The problem is, is time is of the essence, obviously. And compliance issues are getting more complicated after the flood. There's now a tolerance level that people are starting to lose. And so complaints are kind of on an uptick for us as well. So it's really difficult.
I can think of one off the top of my head. I don't think, and it's minimum housing codes, right? Um, I, I think they need to be expanded, but that's not our level, that's at the state level. And that's the 160D. And I'm looking at my 160D expert, he, we can speak on days about minimum housing code, but they have taken that, that, um, authority away from local government. And I do think that is something that is sort of needed.
The authority entirely away?
Not entirely, but it has been so severely undercut, it is one of the most basic cities used to have pretty wide authority. City of Asheville had a whole division. It would require a CO every time you get a new owner of a rental property with an inspection. Those days are over. Minimum housing code is, is, is very severely limited now. But yeah, we have all kinds of code, we have a code of ordinances. And it is full of ordinances that are, just need to be updated. Uh, we've, we've outgrown them. You know, we're not the county of 20 years ago. So sure, there's, there's ordinance, but that's part of the text amendment process. And every time we try to get into bringing forward a set of text amendments, it feels like we have an, another event. And, and I can think of three in the recent review men- mirror, Fred, COVID, and, and Haleen. But, you know, we, we do the best we can.
That's definitely on our to-do list, that we need to start looking at that.
Well, thank you very much.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Just have a quick question. So first, Jason, thank you for this presentation, and really appreciate the holistic approach you all take to this. I'm, I'm just curious, more of a process question. So I see for standing members, you have folks from different areas of compliance expertise. Um, and it's great to hear that oftentimes folks are assisted with additional support, um, with homelessness and mental health and things like that. I'm curious, at what point, like, how are those decisions made to bring in those additional resources, say, from DHHS, or, um, are there partner organizations that we work with through the continuum of care to, to bring those in? I'm just curious what that looks like.
So whenever we first started, we started running into those type issues. And so we had requested that Department of Health and Human Services actually has a standing person at every meeting. And the Homeless Director is at every meeting. And the Sheriff's Department typically has at least one deputy at every meeting that works within the I-grant program to help us look at these and listen to the cases and what we've seen onsite, and see if there is a possibility of help through their services, or some of the outside agencies that they're aware of. So they're in the meetings.
Okay, that's great. And then, I'm curious, do you, we ever have issues that are cross-jurisdictional? For example, um, recently, there was a, a dilapidated home in the city of Asheville, and that was elevated, and then it crossed over into county jurisdiction because there was asbestos on, in the, in the home. Did those types of issues that are cross-jurisdictional come between, come up in, in this process as, as well?
Typically, no. One like that would not, because it would be an air quality issue, and it would be a singular complaint for a county department. The city would be dealing with the other portion of that.
That's great. I'm always curious how we can work more closely with our, with our municipal partners as well. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Appreciate you. And for our final item, um, it is a Healthy Opportunities Pilot Letter to the North Carolina General Assembly. Uh, and I believe that Commissioner Wells wanted to take the lead in discussion on this.
Thank you. The, um, so actually, I think it was at our previous meeting, a, a young woman had come to the meeting and requested in public comment. I think she came, she volunteered at Manah, and she asked for if we would do a letter of support. And Commissioner Horton, Commissioner Edward, Chair Edwards and I, all were in agreement. And so we worked on putting this draft letter together for your consideration. And I'll just speak some to my personal knowledge of HOP. It's a program that I've been paying attention to very closely over the past couple of years, because I see the important work that it's doing out in Barnumsville, in Swananoa, all over the community. But those are two areas that I specifically had really seen a lot going on with it. And I just have to say that I'm so thankful that we already had that in place, and that these community organizations were doing this really important work before Haleen happened. Because as I told several people when I was down at the legislature, speaking with them, um, if you think we have problems now, after Haleen, if we had not had this in place, we would have seen even more problems, because these folks that were, have been working, just as everyone has, even, even harder after Haleen, but they were able, they already had the human infrastructure in place, and the ability to get the food to people, the ability to help people with housing, and, and transportation as well. And so it's just, we had really, I went, I went to Raleigh the week after we were down there speaking with the legislature. I went with some farmers and some, uh, community food hub leaders. And we made really good progress in speaking with our state senators. And I was glad to see that they actually, they were supportive and put it in their mini-bill. Uh, and then, of course, the House and the Senate didn't come to an agreement, so there was, there was no mini-budget. But the hope is, with us doing this and really showing our support, and I hope others across Western North Carolina do too, is so that we can actually get this, that the state will put it back in their budget. It was a pilot project. Uh, since there is no budget, since it was not in the regular budget, it, it stopped right now, which is very unfortunate for our community. Um, you'll see a lot of, you know, data within the letter, but I also just want to point out, Impact Health, who is the one that, who oversees this program for Western North Carolina, they're doing a, um, uh, IMPLAN, is an impact analysis, which looks at inputs and outputs. So it looks at quantitative data for actually the broader impact, the broader economic impact of this program as well. And when you look at that, it is, um, it is, it's pre- it's pretty staggering, you know, the, the impact that this has happened. So you, there's the 75 million in outlays that actually is going into, to providers, to farmers, to whomever who's, you know, they're buying the food from, all of these aspects too. Um, but when you look at the total economic impact, it is, it is much larger with that. The, um, if you look at specifically, I have some data there, and I'll share all this with you later. They're putting together some numbers that should come out later this week. But when you look at the specific broader impact around the, um, let's see here, the, I think this was actually with the food specifically, the food programs. Because there's the food program, the transportation, and the housing program, and then also, um, help around interpersonal violence as well. But around the food program, which is the largest one, you've got the, um, 74 million broader economic impact from just that one program in Western North Carolina. And when you look at the employment for that, the total economic is 555 jobs, either part-time or full-time, and then the labor income over 22 million. I mean, that, and that's just one aspect of the program. So it has, I mean, it is doing really good work, impacting the people in Western North Carolina, and helping them with these social determinants of health, right, that we understand how are, are so important. But then also, the larger economic impact is also something really important to see. And when you look at the county level of service, the outlay, so of that 74 million there, 20, over 21 million of that outlay is in Buncombe County alone. And when you look at, they have some dead data on the, the network of farms, and there's more than 400 farms across Western North Carolina, and 81 of those farms are right here in Buncombe County. And I've spoken to so many farmers who, like, about 20% of their income was based on this program that they planned for. They, like, they grew crops based on this. And so now, that, that's gone away. So they have to figure out what they're going to do and how they're going to get that, that pay for that income. Um, so there's, there's a lot of impacts within our community, and I just really hope that we can have everyone's support in sending this letter to our legislators, and I hope that others across Western North Carolina. I'm hoping commissioners in other counties will also join us in doing this as well, so that we can have a voice across Western North Carolina, and really advocating for this continued support. And happy to answer any, any questions you may have, the best I can. I'm not the expert. Impact Health is.
Fair enough. Thank you. Uh, before I speak, Commissioner Horton, you have anything you would like to add?
Well, thank you for your work and leadership on this, Commissioner Wells. Um, I, I can say, last night, we spoke to several voters in Black Mountain who were, I think, spoke from Bounty and Soul, if I remember correctly. And we're just highlighting the importance of the work that they've been doing. It's phenomenal. And to your point, we absolutely would have been much, much worse shape had we not had so many great people selflessly borderline volunteering their efforts at this point. Um, so I'm happy to support this and open it up for any other discussion, if, if anyone has any concerns, questions. But I think everyone was excited to get behind it.
I would just say thank you, Commissioner Wells, Commissioner Horton, and Chair Edwards for the initiative. I remember when, uh, we had the young woman that came a couple weeks ago and spoke about this. So thank you so much for taking that up and, and drafting this really great letter. And I think that, um, you know, the, the winding down of this pilot program, compounded with cuts at the federal level, um, that I know so many of these partners, ABCCM, Bounty and Soul, Eblin, Helida, Homer Bound, Manah Food Bank, um, these folks are, are really struggling to make ends meet right now. And so this is really, really a critical pilot program that was really, really helpful in supporting residents. So thank you for taking the initiative and happy to fully support this.
You're welcome. And I appreciate all the support. Is this something, I think, would we need to add this on to the agenda for the meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So would we do that to the consent, or what's better with that, or just to the main part of the meeting?
And that's your choice, and Kurt is here to tell you how to add it. But that's your choice. If you want to speak about it again later, then you will add it to your new business, so you can at least make some comments about it before. But if it's on consent, it will just get adopted with the regular. So your, your choice.
So in the form of, go ahead.
I think we should speak about it later, because wherever I go, I hear, I had three people were calling me in church Sunday about this. And the different organizations, you're hearing from everybody. It's really a concern in the community. So I think we need to discuss it in the meeting.
So I'm fun to add that to new business. Um, do we need to go ahead and do that now, Kurt, or would you prefer we just go ahead and make the motion during the meeting proper?
Okay.
And yes, in, in the past, we've always waited to that meeting to add it to the agenda. But he can.
I think that makes the most sense. I just didn't want to cut us off if we're about to end. Um, all right.
I'm curious as well, while we're on the topic of moving things to new business from consent agenda. I, I still have some questions about the consent agenda. Item number four, approval of waiver of occupancy tax penalty for Parks Hospitality Group. I'd like to do a little research before that meeting. I'm happy to request during the meeting, we pull it off the consent agenda, but if we need to do it now, then.
We would not need to do that now.
No, I'm saying, if you have specific questions, you can tell us what those are now, so we can be prepared at five, if you have a specific question. But we've done this in the past, and I've asked staff to go ahead and share what we've done in the past on this. But yes, you can ask those questions then. So one of two things, you can leave it on consent with just some questions, or you can pull it off and make it a new item.
Can we ask those questions during the break, so we're not violating any briefing agenda rules or transparency? Is that okay? Just to avoid anyone who might.
Yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to have one off, have questions for Kurt and the legality and the precedent of that.
Excellent. Good flag, Commissioner Ball.
Yeah, too good.
All right. Unless anyone has anything for open discussion, I will go ahead and.
I'll just, sorry, I ju- I should have mentioned this at the front, and when we had our, uh, Louis and our friends from FCC here. But I just wanted to share with fellow commissioners, I did take the opportunity, um, about a week ago to go tour FCC. I spent a couple hours there with Louis and his team, and Dane was there, um, uh, as part of that. And I just wanted to elevate the, the progress that they've made. I know that we had a, a rough start, but, uh, I was really impressed with their operation. Uh, and they were very generous with their time and, and showing me their process, and how they, um, go back and correct missed pickups and work with, with customers. And so I, I feel a lot better about that partnership. I really appreciate all they're doing and the progress. So I just wanted to share that with fellow commissioners, and happy to discuss, um, one-on-one, if you have questions about how that visit went.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Ball. Any other topics for open discussion? If not, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and I will see you all at 5 o'clock.